Everybody, I'll officially call to order the regular meeting of Coachella Valley Water District Board of Directors. September ninth, twenty twenty five here in Palm Desert, and would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Roll call, please.
Good morning, President Powell.
Here.
Vice President Estrada will arrive a few minutes late, and I will note the arrival time for the record. Director Bianco will be absent for today's meeting, and next Director Aguilar.
Here.
Director Nelson.
Here.
Thank you, we do have a quorum.
Yes, we do. Are there any additions, deletions, or adjustments for today's agenda?
No, sir, there are not.
Very many. Is there anyone from the public wishing to comment at this time?
We do, President Powell, we do have one member of the audience who's asking to speak on a non-agendized item, Mr. Frank Orlett.
Okay.
And you will have three minutes each of the podiums, and then if you can just hit the microphone when the light turns green, your mic is on.
Touch the bottom of the screen.
Thank you. Yeah, you gotta be really.
You're in control.
You gotta be careful. It'll.
Honorable Board, good morning. My name is Frank Orlett, I'm the Vice President for Burt Tech. I'm here speaking with you this morning to respectfully request the Board to consider allowing Burt Tech temporary access for the use of construction water for the Sultan landfill during construction of a new landfill cell. Burt Tech anticipates the current landfill cell will run out of capacity sometime in May or June of twenty twenty six. Our request primarily is for backup, for a backup source of water should our current wells, we have two wells now are digging a third, do not have the capacity needed for the construction phase of a new cell. We anticipate the construction phase to be approximately ninety to a hundred days and begin sometime in the fourth quarter. CVWD has allowed access of construction water for a new cell development at Sultan landfill previously in two thousand fourteen, two thousand and eighteen, and two thousand and twenty two. Burt Tech at one time had requested that the Board consider annexation of the landfill area in order to have permanent access to CBWD water, however, the Board turned down the request. Burt Tech is not requesting a permanent water source, but a temporary backup outlet. The Sultan land, city landfill serves all of the eastern Coachella Valley jurisdictions, including Indio, Coachella, Southern California, Southern Coachella Community Service District, and unincorporated areas of Riverside County. If Burt Tech is unable to develop the landfill cell prior to existing cell being filled, Burt Tech would, it would create a hardship for the eastern Coachella Valley jurisdictions. Burt Tech did approach staff with this request, however, due to the Board's rejection of annexation back in twenty twenty three, was hesitant to move our request forward, thus the reason for me being here today. I thank you for allowing me to speak this morning and for your consideration.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Is there anybody else from the public wishing to comment? You don't have to stay if you don't want to. I mean, you can stay if you want. It's not obligated. This brings us to the Consent Calendar Items five A through F.
John, I'd like to, to pull item five F. Just for a quick question clarification.
Yes.
I'd move the balance of the consent calendar.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Past four oh. Alright, so then this takes us to six, which is discussing item five F.
Good morning, President Powell, members of the Board.
So, so I get this item and appreciate the work you guys did in getting this to us. But I noticed that there's an increase in the premium, and partly it is due to a additional benefit relative to reproductive rights, which I think is really important. But it also mentioned that this is a mandated coverage, so do we, is that a reimbursable increase?
I'll ask Marshawn Swims, our broker, to come and speak on that.
Okay, thank you.
They don't.
Good morning, my name is Marshawn Swims with Keenan and Associates. In relation to your question on SB seven twenty nine, it is a mandated requirement that does provide coverage for infertility and fertility services, and that is not reimbursed to the district, it is simply something that's built in to the premium beginning January one, twenty twenty six, so the cost is passed down to all members that are enrolled in the plan. Right now, for lack of a better term, the carriers are estimating using their methodology to determine what that cost is going to look like to the overall plan. So they are building in that one percent premium increase, and it's going to be likely next year, twenty twenty seven, twenty twenty eight, once we have claims experience to really understand how that benefit is being utilized and the overall impact to the plan. That we'll have more data to back up and see how that's impacting the district's plan specifically based on the utilization.
Okay, I just, it was, I was curious because seven twenty nine does mention consideration for reimbursement, so maybe that'll happen in the future, but that answers my question, thank you very much, both.
You're welcome.
So that, that one percent, it's just that, that's what the premium is going to be for the year. There's no, there's no clawback or true up of that for this year, it'll just be requoted for next year.
Correct, so next year is when we'll see a more true increase to our premium based on the claims and experience.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
John, I'll move approval of item F.
Is there a second?
Oh, second. Oh, somebody said.
No, you did.
Okay.
I was asking if there was a second. Seeing if you guys are awake. So we have a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Past four oh. Takes us to seven A, engineering. David.
Good morning.
You know, while you're walking up here, I just was curious whether there's a water use history on this. I know we looked at it eight years ago, I think. Is there water being used on this project location? Didn't see that in the packet.
Right now, no.
Sorry?
No.
There is not? Okay.
So the purpose of this item is to request that the Board authorize an amendment to an existing special irrigation system installation agreement. The agreement was originally executed in two thousand eighteen, and it expired in two thousand twenty three, however, the property owner has requested an extension on the agreement, the property owner has installed as part of the agreement the turnout to the canal, but has not installed the pipeline, the meter's been installed, but there's no pipeline to the, to the property. And so the amendment allows for an extension to five years from twenty three, which is twenty eight. It establishes or sets the term of the agreement for rather than another five years, it allows for the renewal again at the owner's request, ninety days prior to the expiration. And that's really the gist of the, of the amendment.
Okay. Okay, so the investment was made, I'm just curious, so with no water use history on that property, they would have to establish water use history prior to being able to draw canal water.
Yeah, a portion.
Under the rules, right?
Yes, and a portion of this property already has. And I apologize, President Powell, there is a portion of this property that was taking water as part of their application, which is where they have to demonstrate that they're using water within ID one, or pumping water within ID one. And they were pumping approximately six thousand GPM on the property to the east, which is not shown on this, this map. But that's part of the agreement, so in order to.
Are we seeing a movie now?
In order to ensure that they comply with the agreement, the installation agreement allows for CBWD to stay involved with the installation.
Okay, so could, could you follow up with just the water use history on this property, or do you have it with you?
I have it in the application.
In the original application?
Yes, in the original application.
Alright, I mean, that, those numbers would be, wouldn't we need more current numbers? The, the original application from eight years ago?
Yeah, the original application from eight years ago has six thousand GPM of groundwater pumping.
I get it, I get it, so, but isn't it the amount of water used on the property for, I forget exactly how it works for two years?
Twelve month period.
Twelve month period.
Yeah, for a twelve month period, that's correct.
Alright.
So, so the, so the question, I guess, would be is if that water use of six thousand GPM is, has been established eight years ago in the initial contract, if, if that will also be extended by this action for to, for this upcoming action.
Yeah, I get that, isn't the water use supposed to be more timely?
It's supposed to be within the last twelve months, yes.
Within the last twelve months, okay, so, so that history was useful at the time, but not necessarily useful now. So they would have to establish a new water use history.
Yeah, and that's a, that's a good point, and we could add that to the amendment as part of the installation agreement.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's just consistent with the rule.
With the policy, yeah.
Right, okay.
David, I may not have this right, I may have it confused with something else, but weren't they also asking for that water use on the east, weren't they looking to pipe that well water over to this property, but was there an easement that was required from?
Yes, part of the reason it took so long is they had to go through BLM land.
Right.
Right.
And even that.
And they did do that, and they got all that, just took them a while.
Yeah, so they could now conceivably use the existing well, pipe water over to this property and demonstrate water, groundwater use on this property, which has not yet existed.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, I get it, just want to be clear.
The, the only difference that, that the rule of whether the historical usage of the six thousand GPM was kind of locked in already and kind of moved forward with the historical record, or whether we would have to establish new use for twelve per month, the difference would be that are these, are these folks ready to take water now, or if they could, if they could, if?
They still, they still need to build the pipeline.
Okay, so that, even that within itself would require some time for them to set up, for them to take canal water? So they're not, they're not losing the ability to take water now from the canal if we were to.
That's correct.
If we were to say you need new, a new twelve months of historical use, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, I mean, there's, I'm guessing there's no crop there, so.
No, it's still barren.
They would also have to establish some sort of.
They'd still be using, they have to use the water, right?
Yeah. You'd have to, yeah. I mean, this is going to take a while, it looks like.
Is this, is, I'm trying to recall the, the setup of this project, this idea. Was this, was this that one that was kind of like the first one that we did?
Yeah, this was one of our first ones, yes.
Where they were moving the, okay. Why, and you said, why, why did it, why did it take so long because of the?
Well, a couple of things, they also had to get permission through the USBR to build the, to get the permit to do the work in the canal, and then they had BLM land, which is to the west of this property, they had to run the pipeline through, and that took them some time to get the permit and the easement to do it.
Okay.
So there's no actual application for water?
No, there is an application.
There is?
There is.
Does it say what they're going to use the water for? You know what I mean, I mean, like to irrigate a crop, for instance?
They say they are going to irrigate, I don't, I don't believe, I believe the application is silent on, if they're with me, I'll double check here. Yeah, row crops, grapes, citrus, and dates.
Okay, so some crop.
Yeah. Okay. So the application, when you apply for the application, it requires that you submit data that shows that you've been pumping for the last twelve months. There is no language in the actual guidelines that says if it takes, you know, five years to build the project, that you have to reestablish that, so to.
That's, that's where I was trying to get at, if it was really, that was clear that way, and.
So to.
I think we should clarify that.
I was just going to say, to the Board's point, we could, we could add as part of the language in the amendment that that be reestablished at the time prior to taking water.
I kind of like it dark. Yeah, if you could add some clarification of that, because it, I think it's in the, in the application itself. And, and, and to me, it's pretty clear that you can't take water use from eight years ago and count it for the last twenty twelve months.
Certainly in the spirit of the application.
You know, I would say, I would say this, John, look, that they, let's say this process has taken eight years, and you're looking for a five-year extension, right? So in that, in that contract that we signed earlier, the eight-year contract, listen, we know from the Oasis project, from phase two of the replenishment, that you're dealing with the Bureau, you're dealing with agencies, it's going to take time.
Right.
So if, if there was a, you know, an agreement for this eight-year period, let that water use, you know, go through the contract, but now that we're at the extension, then we, I think we have an obligation to relook at that. And, and let's say they were to, you know, be ready in four months, well, they'd have to establish that twelve-year period.
Yeah, I mean, it comes down to when you calculate the amount of water, canal water that you can deliver, you're going to, that calculation is based on
It is.
The usage for the prior twelve months, so, so that's, you know, if there isn't any usage, the number ends up being zero, so there needs to be something. Probably good just to get that clarified, so that
The.
There's no misunderstanding.
So, so, but I think I heard another option from Director Nelson, and that was, and, and part of the clarification that I think we need to give staff is, I think one option was if it weren't for the ask of the extension, one option would be to lock in the water use that was established during the agreement, even if it took, in this case, the five years or the eight years.
The agreement is expired at this point.
Sure, but I'm saying if there, if, if we were in a scenario where it wasn't expired, the question would be, would we lock in the twelve-month history that was already established as part of the agreement?
I think we would, we would pursue that, but it's not in the language of the application, that if it takes five years, it.
Yeah.
Is that problematic?
Well, I, I, I guess I would defer to the board if that's problematic.
I think it affects the calculation of how much you can deliver.
Well, I, I, I'm wondering if it affects the person that's trying to establish some type of water balance by making investments to set up a, a way to use the water, and they did that at the time that they were trying to move this project forward without realizing that just the process in itself is going to take eight years or five years, and then having to, in a way, kind of redo all that again. I'm trying to understand if it's problematic on their end, because it was my understanding that with this, and I, you know, I'm going off of memory here, but, but, you know, and I don't know if they're growing right now and how easy it would be for them to just kick on that well, it sounds like it's working and it, it wouldn't be hard to turn it on and irrigate whatever they have on there, I don't even know that they have crop there now.
There's no crop.
There's no crop, so, so I'm trying to be open here about what I remember, I thought that when they probably entered into this agreement, they probably grew something, I don't know, but something that used water and it was maybe heavy on water usage, maybe. You, you guys are farmers, you guys know more about what that is, but, but they used it to establish some sort of, of water volume, and, and they might not be in a position to redo all that. Now, and, and if we force them to do that, then what kind of issues does it create for them? That, though, you know, I'm just trying to figure out, like, it seemed to me that back then they went through a big effort to try to establish that.
That, that may be true, here's, the concern I have is that the, the purpose of allowing delivery of water, canal water outside of ID one is to benefit the aquifer that ID one overlies, and if there's no impact to the aquifer, then it doesn't make sense to deliver the water. So that, that's where the requirement of, okay, so, so what we're doing is we're going to stop taking water out of the aquifer and start delivering canal water, and there's a formula of how much, right? But if the, if there is no use of water out of the aquifer in the last many years, I don't see how you can argue that that's beneficial to the aquifer.
Well, we're going to make them use the groundwater, and they already used it, right, so they already used it once for twelve months. And then we're going to force them to turn on the wells again to establish water volume, so it almost seems like we're making them use the water again.
Well, it's been a really long time. I mean, and there's no crop.
Well, the wells, the wells, yeah, the wells, there's no crop on this property, the wells that they're pumping from are on the property to the east of the of the blank property, where it says project location, just to the east of that is where they have some existing wells, and they want to distribute their agricultural operation onto this property. And so the, the application was.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not opposed to doing this, I just think that we need to clarify that the amount of water that gets delivered is based on the prior, the prior use, and that's in the rule is, or in the application, is twelve months. Prior twelve months. You know, we get to the point where everything's ready to go, and then you're like, okay, how much? And you're like, well, okay, well, zero times, whatever the formula is, going to end up being zero, and we don't want, we don't want to get to that point without understanding that there is going to be a calculation.
I think we can add language to the amendment that would require them to reestablish the use in compliance with the outside ID one guidelines.
So, is there a separate document outside of the guidelines that is a standalone document, the application?
Yes.
And, and what we're saying is that, is that the guidelines don't really speak too much on, on the twelve-month requirement, but, but the application does, and so there.
Well, no, the guidelines are clear about the twelve-month requirement.
What's that?
The guidelines are clear about the twelve-month requirement, it's the installation agreement wherein it's enforced effectively that are silent on, you know, what happens if this takes five, eight, ten years.
That's why the prior twelve months is in there, I mean, the idea is that there's no, there's no crop, you know? I mean, you really need to show some benefit to the aquifer. And, you know, if they have figured out a way to use this other well to move water and all that, and then they have a right to do that, and they establish a crop doing that, then you can make the argument that it's beneficial to deliver the canal water so that you can not use the well water there.
If, 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 if we all had a chance to redo this again and provide guidance to an applicant, what would we do different, would we say, hey, by the way, you don't have a need to work on establishing
No, I think.
A water, a water use eight years ago, is there a point where we would be able to give more guidance to the applicant and say, hey, you know what, maybe until you get some type of approval from the Bureau, don't, don't try to work on establishing any sort of water use, I mean, what would we do different?
There's a couple of things, one is the, the installation agreement and the outside ID one guidelines, when it was accepted, they did demonstrate that they were pumping, so we weren't going outside of the guidelines. And then, you know, in their defense, they have to get some sense, you know, that this is going to work, that we're going to allow it before they go through all the expense of dealing with, you know, the Bureau or the, or the BLM and that sort of stuff. So there's, there's that, so the only other option is, or trigger would be when they come and actually apply for water, which is a separate application where we could impose, okay, let's reestablish that what you said eight years ago still applies.
Yeah, and I, I would say based on the fact that they did the investment and the agreement was in place, we would, we would do that, but, you know, it's, it's really not the intent of this outside ID one rule to, to, it's supposed to take existing use and replace it with canal water, it's not supposed to say, you know, if you do all these things to establish use, you know, then, then you get canal water, I mean, it's, it's, you know, I feel like it's a little backwards, and I think going back eight years, I remember it somewhat, is that there was, it was more urgent, I mean, it seemed like things were really happening, and maybe there was a crop and all these things, and, and now it's like you got to start from scratch to demonstrate an impact to the aquifer, and really, the, the rule, the guidelines for the outside ID one is not to encourage establishing use of the aquifer, it's to, it's to replace that, and and if it doesn't exist, you know, what are you replacing, so we're, it's, it's a little backwards to me, and I think the only reason I would be willing to say go for it is that, is that I think it was good faith, you know, eight or whatever, however many years ago, and unforeseen that it would take this long, and so, you know, rather than saying sorry and the investment is, is gone, let's, let's see if we can make it work, but I, but it's, but it's still to me a little backwards, you know, we, we don't do that in order to encourage people to use water, to use the aquifer, it's, it's the other way around. It's, it's to use canal water so that we use less aquifer. And if there's, aquifer use is zero, I don't see how you can make that argument.
Yeah, I mean, we, we hashed all that out when we, when we set these guidelines, and I, I mean, I, I think we have a lot of room for growth. And it also seems a little bit backwards that you would, that you would force new use to extract you know, water in order to replace it with, with canal water when you know, there's canal water available. Maybe things are changing.
Apparently not as.
So, but, look, I, I, I don't know the, too much of the details of this project, I, I think, hopefully, their ability to get through the twelve-month usage is minimal compared to what they've already had to do for eight years with the Bureau and, you know, I'm, I'm just I'm just wondering if, you know, we just create a lot of hoops to try to jump over for.
Well, we've had other applicants in the same area who said that they were using water, and the reality is they weren't, they put in wells that, that weren't viable to produce a crop. And, you know, it's like, I mean, we could have said, oh, yeah, look, there's a well, you know, how much water can you put through that well? Well, the reality was the water was no good, you couldn't grow a crop, so it wasn't, it wasn't real. And, and I think that there needs to be some proof through a reality of actual use that it's real, and it, and apparently it's not that easy to do, but I mean, maybe it's real, maybe it's not, and when we have, it's been a long time, it hasn't happened yet, so you know, I, I, I'm just not a hundred percent convinced that this is a slam dunk, that the water use will actually, you know what I mean, be established. I, I, I mean, I, I think the guidelines and the, the application are pretty well thought out. You know?
Okay.
I mean, you can make the argument that, oh, yeah, well, we're going to use it, so why, why are you making us use it? Well, because maybe you're not, you know, I mean, we've, that's what happened with the other applicant.
So, so is there no need to do amendments to the guidelines if, if it seems like, because I think I, if it's in the application, then, then it's already in the application, that regardless of when you submit for the application, you, you have to do the twelve months, so.
If anything, I think when we go to do an installation agreement, we just.
I think it's already in there, yeah, I just want to make sure that the applicant knows that it's in there, that there's not some expectation that.
That, wait, we're going to flip the switch in the canal water.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, I, I, I would agree with that, and I completely agree with the concept that this type of water service from the canal is for the replacement of water that's used out of the aquifer. And proving it up in a, in the twelve-month period prior to the application is where the Board has been at, and that's where the policy.
Yeah, I think it's a good policy, and, and it's, it's zero right now, so, I mean, they're, you know, how do you? And by the way, it's not, it's not flow rate, right, it's how, how many acre feet are actually being used?
Right.
Right? So.
It's acre feet used.
Acre feet used in that, in the. Acre feet used in that, in that project.
Right.
Hey, John, but, but to kind of clarify that, the timeframe on it, um. Let's say the application, let's say they've used a hundred acre feet. Um, at the time of the application, that's the amount of water that they're looking for, uh, but yet. Because of the, um, hoops to walk through and so forth, it takes. You know, they file the application, they're waiting for the construction of the pipeline. Uh, it takes them a couple of years to get that, I mean, are, are you saying that they have to keep up that? Um, use over for the prior twelve month period? What, what happens if they have a, like a redevelopment project in that, in that?
I would say that, just follow what it says, you know, I mean, if. If it says, I wanna start using canal water on January first of twenty seven. Then you look at calendar year twenty six and say, how much? And then that, that's the ca- that's how you do your calculation, how much did you use? And it's not a hundred percent, it's like two thirds or something.
Yeah, it's a.
It's a percentage, yeah. Or maybe it's one point two.
It's one and a half percent, or one and a half times.
One point five, yeah, it goes the other way, because of the re- the recharge, yeah. Anyways.
So part of the benefit of allowing this contract to continue even though it's expired, but it's not only the term. But to re- to reestablish that they still have these obligations, one of which is maintain this twelve month. Usage requirement pursuant to the guidelines, and that's the amendment you like in that.
Well, I think it's in there, yeah, like, like, let's say it takes five years, I mean. It doesn't really matter if there's water use during the next four years, it's the, it's the, it's the twelve months prior to using canal water.
So I think David and I can make language changes to address that issue in the amendment if the board wishes to proceed.
Yeah, it'd be good to for them to get a sense of when the switch is ready to be flipped. So that, so that it gives them a sense of when they need to start using the water.
It, well, is that really?
Well, they, they start, they start a pipeline.
No, but it's up, but if there is. It is up to permits and. Schedules and things like that, that I think we have a.
Yeah, they have all their permits as far as I know, now.
They have all the permits.
Yeah, as far as I know.
Does, does any of that go through? Any of our scheduling or the talk with the bureau?
Once, once the bureau and, the bigger one was BLM.
What was that?
Bigger one was Bureau of Land Management.
But, but the actual construction, he said, no, they have to start construction, the turnout.
The turnout has been constructed.
Okay, so what's missing from kind of construction standpoint?
The pipeline, so it's a turnout and the meter was installed.
And the pipeline.
But it goes to nowhere at this point.
The pipeline's completely private?
Yes.
So the be, the meter's in?
The meter is in, yes.
Okay, so that, so there is nothing left for us to permit?
Well, the installation, we, you know, gives us the mechanism for ensuring that they build what they said they were gonna build. And that they're complying with the outside ID one guidelines.
Okay.
All right, are we good? Everybody's, we have a motion to approve this item?
Make motion to approve.
With the noted change and revision to the First Amendment.
Yeah, I don't know if it's a change is so much as just a clarification.
A clarification or a reference to the guidelines requirement in the First Amendment.
Yeah, I think so, I think so. I'll, I'll second your motion. Uh, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pass four oh.
Thank you.
Thanks, David. Uh, B.
I think that's me too.
Don't go anywhere, go ahead.
All right, the purpose of this item is to, for the board, request the board to approve solicitation of bids. For the Whitewater River Stormwater Channel Bank Protection Upstream of Cook Street Project. And for the general manager to execute task order number five in the amount of nine two thousand seven hundred dollars to Albert A. Webb Associates, who is the engineer of record. To provide bid support services, the total cost of the request is one hundred thirteen thousand two hundred dollars. Which includes contingency and CBWD engineering. The project is included in this year's capital improvement budget. Uh, and is within the budget, um, and therefore there's no other request regards to the budget and I'll take any questions.
Obvious question, I think. So sometimes, uh, when we need slope protection, we have the adj- adjacent property owner pay for it, right? But we're making the argument that this slope protection benefits our recharge site, is that right?
Uh, the recharge, we also have two sewer lines, uh, if you may recall, hey, we had an issue with them a few years back.
Yeah, well, I remember the scour and the.
Yes, so it provides an opportunity to provide scour protection with that.
I, I, I just wanna make sure that we're being clear why we're doing it that way, fi- funding it that way. So that next time we go to a adjacent property owner and ask them to pay, they'll be like, well, they didn't pay. You know what I mean? Nothing against, I don't know if that's still first tier who that is, but Desert Recreation District, right? No problem with that, but, um. You know what I'm saying?
I do.
Next time you go to a private property owner and ask them to pay, they're gonna be like, well, why? They didn't pay.
Dude, is this concrete? It is, yes. Well, the difference here is that the, the land above the channel is already developed and so there's no. Condition precedent upon developing that land that would require us to do the slope lining, they're already there.
Yeah, that's true.
Didn't require the slope lining for them to be there, so it'd be a little bit, I don't know.
No, but it's not buildings. Remember we had the issue with buildings within a certain distance?
Three hundred feet.
Three hundred feet of it.
Yeah, and this is. This is not buildings, it's a golf.
So again, I, I guess my point is it's hard for us to require something that's not necessarily required.
Right. It's not required, I agree with that. Okay, yeah, that's fair.
I was gonna add, I said it in here, but I didn't say it, uh, earlier, was the, we're looking to bid this with the replenishment project. Get some synergies and ideally some, uh, discount on the construction costs. I would move, I would move approval.
The problem we had. It's not good, well, so, so, yeah, we have a motion, a second, one other question, so. Remembering back when the, when the lake failed or whatever it was at, at the golf?
Yeah.
And it ripped open our pipe, um.
Where they ruined the soil.
If this slope protection were there, wouldn't it just create the same problem behind the protection?
Well, ideally, um, what part of the problem with that is that it overflowed over the slope and it back cut. So if it overflows over the concrete, it's only gonna go to where the concrete will be.
Concrete, yeah, okay, so fair enough. I mean, it might scour out a little behind it, but that wouldn't create the problem, yeah, cause it would contain. Okay, so this does protect our, our facility there, our pipes.
Yes.
Right, thank you, uh, all right, there's a motion and a second, um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pass four oh.
Thank you.
Thank you. C. Sabrina, good morning. Ah, Talavera, our favorite topic. Go ahead.
To authorize the general manager to award a construction contract to Borden Excavating. As the lowest responsive and responsible bidder in the amount of five million, one hundred eighteen thousand, one hundred twenty six dollars for the Talavera Water Main Replacement Phase One. Project and approve additional expenditures for a total request of six million, one hundred ninety one thousand, three hundred sixty one dollars. Um, the total cost of this project, um, or actually this project was included in the domestic water fund, um. Budget in the amount of seven million, two hundred fifty thousand dollars, um, so. Good news, uh, the bids came in fairly low, we actually had a really wide range of bids.
Yeah, I was surprised how wide, yeah.
Um, so, you know, not normally, uh, you've seen a lot of competitive bids and we've seen a lot of cost increases for our projects. Um, we did confirm with the lowest bidder, um, he is comfortable with the bid that he submitted. Um, so all in all, good positive news for the project, um, and we'll be funding this project using bond funding. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I, I'm just, I'm trying to understand the exhibit, uh, cause some of these say complete and I'm trying to get a sense of what's. Part of the project, is it phase one or, or just the?
Sure, yeah, so Talavera's, um, separated into five phases of replacement. Um, we've currently replaced phase two, so it went slightly out of order, um, prioritized based on the most recent failures. Um, the, the exhibit, um, is just an exhibit that we keep updated to document where the leaks are occurring and then we prioritize the phases based on. The number of leaks and how severe they are, so to date, we've only completed phase two and then now we'll be moving to phase one. And we'll have three more phases to complete after this.
And these are all, these are all mainline leaks?
That's correct.
Uh, not service lines?
Correct.
Okay.
Uh, the, the service lines, we don't, um, follow those as much, um, because those are a little bit easier to address. It's the mainline links that are much more significant and severe.
Have we, Borden, have we used them before?
Um, I'm not, you know, I think the district actually has had a few projects with them in the past, um. Uh, many years ago, um, they are a reputable pipeline contractor, they do quite a bit of work for other public agencies, that is.
So they've been fully vetted?
That's correct, yeah, um, I personally in my career worked with them enough times.
Well, there you have it.
Yeah, um, I, I know that they're gonna get the work done, they move very quickly and efficiently. And so I think for work within these communities, that's important too, to get in, get out, get the work done and move on.
So, so they go in, let's say for phase one, which is the one we're talking about. They'll, they'll go in and replace a hundred percent of the mainline in that phase, so it doesn't really matter where the leaks are, it's just, it's gonna be everything.
Correct.
And it just kinda catches my eye. For phase three, those three leaks, they're really close to phase one. And, is there any way to? It's probably too late, I know, but, you know what I'm saying, to, to cut phase three into, into. Take a chunk out of phase three and push it into phase one and.
So in my old.
One pipeline down.
I'm, may, I mean, maybe that just creates problems up line, I, that's what you're gonna say, huh?
In my old job, that would be considered out of scope.
Well, no, well, no, I know it's already been bid and, and everything and, and I'm in favor of this, but. You know, you see those three dots close to phase one and you're like, why isn't that part of phase one?
I mean, what we could do is just roll into replacing phase three right afterwards.
Well, we're gonna have to do something next, yeah, that, maybe that's it.
I would say maybe phase four, but.
Yeah.
Or three, four and five.
There you go.
Yeah, I get it, I mean, it's, the, the reality is it's corrosive and it's gonna all need to go anyways, right? I mean, that's the. The leaks, we even, we, we haven't had any in phase five yet, so.
And, uh, we, we've done enough of an investigation to. Suggest that every. Single piece of the, those lines is corroding in the same way, um. It's not just happening in some areas, it's.
Correct, so the entire community is affected.
We had, we had a study, right? Did we do a study?
That's correct, it was done in two thousand sixteen.
And on that study, we took like random samples of, just even pipes that. We didn't have a leak on, we just went over there and.
Correct, so, yeah, between both, um, Talavera and Sun City, um, twenty kind of random sections were taken out, um. Some were prioritized based on leaks that had occurred to, you know, validate, uh, why those leaks were occurring, um, and then the photo that's included here is. Fairly representative, those samples were then, um, blasted to remove the, um, the carbon deposits that are left behind. And then the pitting was evaluated, um, and most of them actually had pretty significant pits. Um, so really the soil is what's keeping everything together at this point.
Yeah, it's a big, big problem.
Yeah.
Right, is there a motion to approve this item, C?
I'm, make the motion to approve.
Second. Is this below our, our estimate?
Correct, yeah, we, we thought it would be somewhere around seven point two million.
Wow, okay, good.
And the range of bids went up to around eight million.
Right, I saw that.
Yes, we did get a, a fairly big.
Better, yeah, well, maybe the market's softening a little, who knows?
Yeah, and Borden tends to be fairly low, um, that's their goal, is to be the lowest bidder.
And we'll make sure that they, they work with the community so that it's not as disruptive as it anymore than it needs to be, right?
Correct, so with our communications team, we do have a whole public outreach, um, protocol set up, we've been working with the HOA consistently through design. Uh, regularly meet with them and attend their meetings to, um, make sure that we're cognizant of the community and particularly around the holidays, making sure that we don't block access.
Fair enough, all right, so, go.
I was just gonna say, yeah, there's a, I mean, there's a nice spread on the bids and. A lot of these are, a lot of these folks are, are active in the valley right now and maybe that's why it's easy for them to just mobilize. And get another crew and, uh, be here in the valley, but a lot of these folks are here, um. It's good, it's good that it came lower than expected.
Or maybe they're already so busy they, they can bid higher.
Yeah. True that.
Who knows, uh, all right, motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? The pass four oh, thanks Sabrina. See you on the next one too, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm gonna be up here for a minute, um, so the next request is to authorize the general manager. To execute a professional services agreement with Chambers Group for environmental services for well and transmission main construction projects. In the amount of one hundred seventy nine thousand, five hundred and six dollars and approve additional expenditures for a total request of two hundred thirty five thousand dollars. Uh, this project is included in our domestic water fiscal year twenty twenty five CIP in the amount of two hundred thirty five thousand dollars. We will be funding this project using Pago funds, um, design and construction of the projects, um, will be included. And in future years, um, so this is just exclusively for environmental work. Um, and the purpose of this project is to prevent, prepare environmental review, secret compliance documents. Complete all required steps to obtain environmental clearance for construction of fourteen domestic water wells. Nine thousand, eight hundred and twenty feet of domestic water transmission mains. Um, which is all required to mitigate the impacts of the recent chromium six regulation changes. Um, we advertised this, um, project for proposals on June thirteenth. We, um, received seven proposals on August sixth, after evaluating, um, the proposals. We did determine that Chambers Group was, was the lowest and most responsive proposal in the amount of one hundred seventy nine thousand, five hundred and six dollars. And I would be happy to answer any questions related to this that you may have.
Do we have a motion to approve this item?
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pass four oh. Okay. Still? They don't write your name down on the other ones, just the first one.
I like to do four and five at a time, so.
Go for it, go for it.
Um, so the next one is a request to authorize the general manager to execute task order number eleven to the Bionile Professional Services Agreement with Krieger and Stewart. Incorporated in the amount of two hundred forty seven thousand for design services for the well forty six thirty two dash one pumping plant project. And approve additional expenditures for a total request of three hundred ten thousand dollars per developer agreement twenty twenty one dash zero one four one two zero eight. Uh, this is related to the Cotino development, um, we recently completed drilling of the well, so we're moving into equipping of that well. Um, they are required to, um, provide one fully equipped well to CBWD. So this will complete that component of their agreement, um, they are paying for the entirety of this scope of work. Um, and we do have this included in the domestic water, um, fund fiscal year capital improvement budget in the amount of seven hundred thousand dollars. Uh, the remaining scope of the work will be included in future fiscal years. And I would be happy to answer any additional questions that you may have on this one.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Fair enough, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pass four oh. You got the last one too, okay.
Home stretch, um, our last request is to authorize the general manager to execute task order number one. To the Bionile Professional Service Agreement with Woodard and Curran in the amount of two hundred one thousand seventy four dollars for the preparation of the East Coachella Valley Water Supply Plan update. And approve additional expenditures for a total request of two hundred fifty thousand dollars. Um, the project will be funded with a one million, nine hundred eighty seven thousand dollar, nine, one million, nine hundred eighty seven thousand, two hundred fourteen. Dollar drinking water planning ground from the California State Water Resources Control Board. Um, design and construction of these projects will be included, um, as separate projects in future fiscal years, so this is exclusively just for the planning effort alone. Um, and we have it included in the domestic water, um, operating budget in the amount of two hundred fifty thousand dollars. And this is an update to the, um, plan that was prepared initially in two thousand eighteen, completed in two thousand nineteen. And I can answer any additional questions you may have. And I can answer any additional questions you may have.
Yeah. It's been a while, so.
Another report.
Makes sense that it's due for an update. Well, they're they set the priority for the consolidations that we go after.
Yeah.
So, um, that old plan had all the projects that we've done kind of prioritized and I think it's makes sense to look at it again, so. It'll, it'll set a new path.
Especially since the state requires it.
They'll pay for it, so.
So I think the first time we did it, it was a half million dollar.
Yeah, significantly more.
Project, so this one's a little less because it's already done and now they're just updating it.
Correct, so it'll be updated with the consolidations that have been completed as well as the new changes that have occurred um over time, so we'll go back um and work with our public outreach, um Riverside County um Health and then also the EPA on the consolidations that need to be added to the plan as well as the tribal communities.
Should be good.
Yeah, it's good. I mean, it seems expensive for a plan update, but, cause the, the first time they had to invent the entire concept of what are we doing and, you know, ser- doing all those surveys and and it was a big project that I doubt that it's gonna be nearly that much work for this one.
Yeah, so part of this will be, you know, taking a step back, again, reevaluating all the communities and then clustering the projects together or the consolidations together into projects and developing cost estimates and a prioritization plan.
Right, okay. Was tribal included in that original?
Um, that I'm not sure, but I don't think to a large extent.
You know, and then the other one that I believe we did not include were unpermitted parks, right?
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't include, um, on, we, we, we made note of them, said that we knew they were there, but only hit the permitted perks as part of the forty-two projects. We did consider um tribal systems, but we also gave them a low ranking because of the complex issues with right-of-way access and all that and the easements.
Yeah.
But, so they ranked sometimes a little bit low, but at the same time, they ranked high because they have the, some of the worst water quality issues. Um, and I know since, since, since then, we've also have identified all the systems that EPA has kind of um taken responsibility over. I think it's about eighteen or twelve, so I imagine all those will somehow will tell a story about what, you know, where those are at and things like that, so. Yeah, it'd be interesting to see what comes out of it.
Okay, you gonna make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you Sabrina.
Thank you.
Passed four oh. Onto seven G. Sequer review for eighty-six water transmission main. Good morning.
Good morning, President Powell, members of the board. William Patterson, environmental supervisor for Environmental Services Department. Um, today we're requesting the certification of our initial study mitigated negative declaration, adoption of the mitigation monitoring and reporting program and authorization of file notice of determination to complete secret review for the highway eighty-six water transmission main phase three and four project. Talk a little bit about the project quickly. It's a replacement of the existing water transmission main that terminates in Salt City. Um, that pipeline, um if you could pull up the map, please. That pipeline's met its um useful lifespan and it will be replaced as numerous leaks. It's approximately fifteen miles long. Um, there's portions of the pipeline that are within the Caltrans right-of-way and portions that are outside of the Caltrans right-of-way. Um, what's unique about this document is does analyze the impacts of portion, both portions of the project within and outside of the Caltrans right-of-way. There were some alignment changes there that um were necessary to deliver this project, mostly due to land ownership uh from BLM and the long process that would take to secure encroachment permit for the project. Um, essentially, there's about fifteen and a half miles. The majority of that is in Imperial County and a small piece picks up where phase two was completed, about a mile or half mile above the Riverside County boundary. Um, so with that, we've worked with engineering and web consultants to produce this sequer review of the project. Um, this project um analyzed all SEQUA resource topics, resulting in eighteen mitigation measures that are summarized in the MMRP that reduce all impacts to less than significant. Um, this also went out for public review for thirty days. We received uh comments from eight different agencies and addressed those comments, made edits where necessary to the document. Um, this document also contains SEQUA plus federal crosscutters, which are um requirements of the Clean Water State Revolving Fund grant eligibility for NIPA compliance. And with that, we'll take any questions.
Is there a motion to approve this item?
So move.
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Passed four oh.
Thank you.
Thanks. This is the water supply assessment for Catalina. And Jo- hi, Joanna. Remind me of this property, was there s- another use of this pro- was it used to be a golf course there, didn't there? No?
Um, not quite sure, but uh MSA consultant is here.
There was a golf course there. Like Portola something or other. I, I don't remember the name of it, but, yeah, there used to be something there, right? Okay, go ahead.
Okay, good morning, President Powell.
Yeah.
And members of the board. Uh, my name is Joan Ley, Director of Environmental Services. This morning, staff is requesting uh board approval for the Catalina Project Water Supply Assessment. As I mentioned, our MSA consultant is present here to answer any questions you have uh specific to the, uh, the project. Um, as you see here on the map, the project is located in the central portion of the Coachella Valley within the city of Palm Desert at Frank Sinatra Drive and Portola Avenue. Um, I've included here the project site, which I'll go over on, on um land use. The project um comprises about seventy-seven point three acres of vacant land to include forty-one acres dedicated to five hundred and forty-six residential lots of varying sizes, uh, two point five acres of retention basins, eleven point nine acres of uh common open space and twenty point four acres of road.
So that's, just so you, obvi- it's obvious, right, that that slide, that you can't total the second column, cause it's averages, but we, we know they're not putting fifty-two units to the acre on this place, right?
It's EDU per acre.
There was, yeah, yeah. It's immaterial, I think, but
Gotcha.
Kinda stands out. Go ahead.
Moving forward to the total water demand projected um for this project is a hundred and forty-three point eighty-two acre feet per year, which is equivalent to one point eight six acre per uh acre feet per acre. Um, to summarize it, the proposed indoor residential demand is fifty-one point thirty-seven acre feet per year. The, the proposed indoor commercial and industrial demand is uh two point eight nine acre feet per year. The proposed outdoor irrigation demand is eighty-seven point eighty-four acre feet per year and the proposed outdoor res- rec- recreational demand is uh one point seven one acre feet per year. Um, this, WSA has been prepared in compliance with the requirement under Senate Bill six-ten and twelve sixty-two by MSA Consulting in consultation with CBWD and the city of Palm Desert. And it does not relieve the project of complying with all applicable state, county, city and local ordinances or regulations, and that includes our landscape ordinance and indoor water use performance standards provided in the California Water Code now or in the future. Um, that includes my presentation and I can answer any questions you may have.
Yeah, I have a question. So does this include in the assessment um any changes in hydrology projections based on drought conditions or do we still look at a twenty-year window?
Yes, we are.
Clearly, there are changes happening
Right.
that are not good, so um I don't understand how that is incorporated into your assessment.
We factor in to this assessment based on our um curtain planning requirement, sigma, urban uh water use. And um as we go forward with sigma update, which we are
Mm-hmm.
right now, um, we are also factoring in to that and as the project, let's say the project doesn't build, doesn't get constructed in five years, at that point, we'll reevaluate the water uh supply.
Uh, in five years, okay.
Yes.
Thanks.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I mean, you know, the, that's at some, there's gonna come a day when these are gonna be much more difficult.
Yeah.
And, and, and probably what that, it'll happen and they'll just reduce the number of units to get below the statutory requirement for a water supply assessment.
Correct, and we have to look at uh factoring into making conservation a way of life as well. It's uh been adopted to by the state. All that's been factored into this water supply assessment.
Fair enough.
Okay, I would move approval of this item.
Second.
Yeah, uh, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you much.
Passed four oh. Thanks, thank you, Joanna. Uh, written communications were included in the packet. There were two of them and it looked like they were resolved. The uh, we have an information presentation, which is our OPEB uh performance review. Feel like we've done a couple of performance reviews pretty recently, so maybe we can just hit the high points. Seems like they're doing fairly well.
We certainly shall do so, um, President Powell. Uh, Perry is joining us online and he will give you a brief presentation as far as the um the actual trust itself. I did wanna point out a few things within the board agenda item itself. We do have a new hundred and four percent funded status for the OPEB liability as of June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five. That hundred and four percent funded status would be incorporated into our financial statements, which are currently um undergoing audit and would be issued um probably early November. And then also within the board agenda item, we did provide an overview of the establishment of the new uh PARs uh pension trust, moving it from PFM to PARs, and Perry and I are happy to answer any questions regarding um any of those items um during or, or now or during the presentation.
Why, why don't we start with a question on that point, because that's the only question I have and then you can expedite your presentation. So in the staff report, it mentions that um all of the funds uh in the OPEB trust uh trust were moved to the nu- newly established PARs trust account. And then later on, it says that initial contribution of five million five hundred
There you go.
was made to the PARs pension trust.
The pension.
So isn't, aren't they both pension trusts?
No, one is um strictly for the pension liability and the other one is for the health benefits, which is the OPEB, the other post-employment benefits. And so they are segregated, although they are considered a combined trust, they are kept separately, uh funded separately and there's fr- separate reporting for each one of those.
Separately then.
Correct.
I see, okay, thanks.
There is residual uh potential revenue for investment earnings for this quarter uh for the OPEB trust, and so we are still keeping the principal account and the PFM activity um opened likely until December, and that was a recommendation from PFM just to make sure that any residual revenue we also transfer over to the new PARs uh OPEB trust. Good question. Perry, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, great. Um, does everyone have the presentation in front of them or do I need to share screening?
Uh, we're sharing the screen, Perry, and I can go ahead and forward the slides for you um based on your direction.
And Perry, let me ask staff to, to make sure that you could see that on Zoom, if we can show the PowerPoint. Can we do a PIP? Just give us a minute. There you go.
Thank you very much. And um, uh, as always, we appreciate uh your confidence in PFM asset management and we appreciate uh, you know, the uh, your decision to open up another, another section one fifteen trust with us, um, the smaller account. It funded on August eighth, by the way. Um, and things are rolling with, with PARs overseeing the administration side of it and PFMS management, handling the investment side. So with the, with the current account that we've had since two thousand sixteen, I just, if you could flip to the next page right here, just to give you, the second quarter was definitely an interesting quarter. If you recall, the first quarter was um negative throughout the quarter. Most of the noise around the tariffs. Um, the second quarter really started that same way. We had positioned your portfolio um poorly through the first quarter to be a little bit more defensive. We lowered your equity compared to your target in your policy by a couple percentage points. Um, and you know, that, that did well through the first quarter, allowed us to protect the assets and not, not have as a negative number like most of the markets did. And then going through the second quarter, uh, in late April, the announcement came out that China in the US had a ninety-day agreement that we keep tariffs at ten percent and they would negotiate. And the markets really took off from there, so the second quarter ended up being really strong in May and June. You can see there by the, the S and P five hundred coming in at ten point nine four and the Russell three thousand coming in at almost eleven percent domestic equity-wise. International equity actually did even better. We used the third one down as the Morgan Stan. And we AC XUS and that came at twelve point oh three percent for the quarter. So overall, the markets really recovered from what the first quarter was and you can see that by the year-to-date numbers being going from where on March thirty-first they were negative to all being positive and significantly positive, considering the, the negative start in the first quarter. So where we are today, um, if you just drop down actually to one point eight. Here we go, right here. Um, so where, where we are today is, is basically when we look at things uh from a standpoint, from an economic standpoint and, and a market, and we, you know, it appears this way that Wall Street's in the same position right now. Although the markets are very gone very well, we're still waiting for the tariffs to be worked out so that everyone can get a better feel for
It's never gonna.
what type of um strain it could have on the markets and the economy, um depending on how, how aggressive the tariffs are and, and how, what the scope of them are. So really, when we look at things right now, monetary policy, economic growth, inflation, we're all somewhat neutral there. Inflation has been going in the right direction. Hence, the Fed, you know, announcing that they're gonna make a cut here in September. When they made that announcement, you saw the markets take off and do very well. Um, so with that being said, our biggest concern still really is in the bottom right corner, is the political risk. You know, the geopolitical risk has been there for quite some time. And right now, here in the US, the political risk is really just stressing over the tariffs and seeing where they lay out. You know, as, from an era standpoint, we don't, we don't like uncertainty and we're still in that mode. But overall, from an economic standpoint, the econo- the economy's holding up pretty well. Unemployment is still only a four point one percent. And GDP growth for the second quarter was, was a really nice growth, somewhere, it's gonna wind up between two and a half and two point nine for the second quarter. So, you know, strong numbers there. Jobless claims did increase. We'll get more job reports this week, so we'll see how that plays out in June. They did increase a bit. But not to numbers that were over concerning. As I said, unemployment is still holding up at four point one percent. So overall, economy's certainly a good place. We're just waiting to see where these tariffs play out so we can get a better feel for where the markets may go. With that, um, you can go to page two point one. And right here, overall, good solid um numbers for the quarter. Uh, coming in at six point eight two percent for, for, for the, for the quarter versus the benchmark at about seven point two six. And it really was that we, we made that defensive positioning in the first quarter and stayed with it through the second. So, so we missed out on a little bit, but overall, very good solid number. You can see, um, your longer-term numbers are sitting in really good shape. Your five-year number is at eight point three eight versus the benchmark at eight point oh seven. And since inception, you're seven point nine six versus seven point six six. Um, which is, you know, very good position to be in. The allocation is designed to come in somewhere between six point seven five and seven a quarter. So right now, we're, you know, we're exceeding that on the long term, which is really the goal, is to stay up above seven. Um, so, so with that being said, numbers in a pretty good position. If you drop down to two point five, right here, this is just showing you the allocation we worked. Right here, this is just showing you the allocation we were going toward the end of the quarter. Uh, the actual, the dark blue is the actual allocation and the light blue is the is the target of the investment policy. So you can see, going toward the end of the quarter, we are about a little over two percent underweighted in domestic equity. We have increased that through the third quarter, so we're getting back to being closer to targets going forward. Um, but you won't see us try to take advantage of any overweighting until we get a better feel of where the tariffs lie. Um, and then if you just go back up one page, two point four. To give you a feel what that that return for your quarter means, that six point eight six percent return for the quarter in hard dollar return. Um, if you top box third column over return investment, it was two and a half million dollars. It's a positive gain, and then if you just drop down to that bottom box, over the past year, that double digit return meant a. Four point two million dollar gain in your portfolio. So uh, you know, overall, things are sitting in a very good position, despite the uncertainty in the in the markets and the tariff um stress here. Once things lay out, we'll get a better feel for how we wanna direct our portfolio going forward. But um overall, right now, things are sitting in a good position.
And to point out on these um, on the net outflows there, the nine hundred and forty seven thousand three hundred and ninety two. That also includes a reimbursement to the district for retire, a portion of the retiree health benefits and that reimbursement was eight hundred and fifty six thousand. Three hundred and fifty dollars, so the difference is ninety six.
Is that something?
Ninety one thousand forty two dollars.
Something we can continue to do since we're super funded at this point?
Yes, that is correct, we do have um an anticipated additional drawdown this year for about a hu- eight hundred and fifty thousand. We may increase that to about a million, um we don't want to be over maybe a hundred percent, a hundred and five percent funded. The sweet spot maybe would be ninety five to a hundred and five, but after that, the IRS will start to uh look at the. The balance in that trust.
Right, good.
That's all good news, is that six point eight percent, is that an annualized yield?
Yes.
Okay.
It's for the quarter, but yeah, it's it's annualized.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
And that's all I have.
Yeah, and I'm glad we did that, I remember when we didn't have an OPEB trust and. It's definitely allowed us to leverage those dollars and.
Yep.
Right, and just.
Worked out pretty well.
Compared to some other OPEBs, you guys have made very good decisions, um you funded it well, you 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 know, you're you're sitting in a much better position. Some other organizations didn't quite fund it as well as they got started, so now they're walking, they feel like they're underf- they are underfunded. But it was more so that they didn't um have the plan, plan that you guys put together.
Flattery is always a good idea, thank you.
I'm just, I'm just giving you the, giving you the facts, I mean, you put a big plan together and you moved on it, because like I said, I have a few others that are. They're still kind of figuring out how much they wanna contribute every year and if they would have, you know, kind of had.
Cause they're afraid.
Beginning, they would look more like yours as opposed to, you know, feeling stressed like they're underfunded.
No, that, than- thanks for that, hey Carla, I do have one other question in in that. We're transferring a fifty, nine forty seven, a hundred thousand, um is that the complete. Uh cost of other post, post employment benefits or are we contributing others from our um. Our general fund or from the annual budget?
Uh, that's a great question, the total cost is near one point five million dollars, so we haven't drawn down the full amount, we could go up to that full amount on an annualized basis.
Okay, yeah, I was just trying to think in my head what kind of levers we have as moving more money or less money, since the fact that we're a little. Not over, you know, super funded, but we're well funded.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Let's see, where are we here? Board general comments, Director Nelson.
No, no comments this morning, John, thanks.
No comments, Jim. Just wanna announce that uh we'll be participating in a, in a speaking series at uh summit. Being put together by the Desert Healthcare District um at the Weston uh on Wed- on Thursday. I believe some staff might be there, Jim, I I I don't know if you verified, but I thought that that they were on schedule to be there with promotional items in a booth. So, okay, thank you, I know you did that last year, uh so thank you for that. Um, so I'll I'll be in a, in a, in a panel with uh some of our colleagues here in the different water agencies, including. A Desert Water Agency, uh the general manager there, um executive director from the. Um, Regional Water Quality Control Board here locally and that's some other folks, so looking forward to that. Um, and then I think some of us are on schedule to be at the all mayor's luncheon on, on Friday, so. So I'll see you there.
See you there.
Yeah.
I still have one ticket, if somebody's interested.
Busy.
John's busy, um, so yeah, looking forward to that, uh that's all.
Great, um, so I got an email, I'm sure, Jim, you probably saw it. There's some organization, a water organization that wants to recognize CBWD.
CMUA in Long Beach.
In Long Beach on September twenty eighth. And Adon Ortega apparently is chair of that group. What are we doing, what are we doing about that?
Uh, so I will be going.
Oh, good.
Yeah, so um, they uh. They coordinated with me a little bit on that and uh in preparation for that letter to be sent out and. Um, because of the nature of the award, uh thought they'd be important for the letter to go to you and. Uh, some staff members that were part of that, given their participation in the task force over, over the last ten years. Um, we've uh, is it the Cal Mutuals, Jim, it's Cal Mutuals, right?
I'm sorry?
The Cal Mutuals?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, uh they've, they've been um, you know, they've been very interested in. In this idea of big systems helping small systems address some of their issues. And so they, I think, are are um looking at CBWD as an example of that. And that's the reason for, for the, for the award, so. Uh, I've been part of their annual conference uh before. So I think this, this uh is getting rolled into that annual conference, which I think is the day after. So I am scheduled to be uh in a panel with them on on Monday. Uh, so I'll be there on Sunday as well, um, but yeah, I'd like to know who else is going or if I'm gonna go solo.
Yeah, I don't, I I wasn't planning to be anywhere near Long Beach on that particular day. Unless there was a good reason to go, I mean, I, if you're there, I feel, feel good about it, but.
Yeah, I'll I'll be there, um.
Yeah, appreciate, you know, the recognition.
Yeah, so just uh, Sylvia, let me know who else gives you word on that, but uh I will be making arrangements to be there.
Great.
What, what date is that again?
It's on a Sunday on September twenty ninth.
Twenty eight.
Twenty, yeah. So it's a, it's a dinner um in the evening and then the following day for one day.
Long Beach, I'll bet Gloria Cordero will be there, she's from Long Beach.
Yeah, 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 so maybe I'll see you there, but uh, so yeah, I'll be making arrangements for that.
Great, thanks. Um, also, apparently the uh grand reopening ceremony for Lake Quia Veterans Park was postponed.
Yes.
So now they're talking about doing it on November eighth, which is a Saturday. And I was gonna participate in that, but um not sure yet my schedule on that. Cause I know I need to be out of town on Sunday, so.
And that postponement date still has not been.
Hasn't even been firmed up yet, yeah.
The word was likely on.
Yeah, so.
Until I receive confirmation.
Yeah, I'm not even gonna put it on my calendar until we know more, but they're doing a, you know, the county supervisor and all that, it sounds like a really nice thing, I would go, but I don't know.
I think a few was were on schedule.
Yeah, I know, so it's not gonna happen until later, yeah, so you know.
It'll likely be a Saturday again.
Yeah.
Likely to be another Saturday, cause I think they wanna do like an all day, eleven AM till like.
Well, we did that with the, we did that with the signing and it was in the morning.
Of the lease agreement.
Yeah, and you were there, Peter, and uh.
Are we gonna fish, I mean, are they gonna have?
Mm-hmm, I think that that was part of the.
Fishing derby, I mean, it might be enough to go if there's a fishing derby.
Yeah, there might be, and there was one, uh, there might have been one last time.
I was, I was just gonna ride my bike out there again.
Oh yeah, you did, he rode his bike down there.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's, it the, are they still doing the Ironman, I know that's in December, right?
Yeah.
But, so this, they may end up be having it pretty close to the same date as the Ironman.
Yeah, exactly.
The rate they're going. All right, well anyways, that's kinda out there. That's all I have. Uh, are there any board requests for fu- future agenda items?
So we had a, we had a public comment today about the, the request for an agenda item and so. I'd like to make a motion to have that conversation at our next meeting.
This is the BRTech?
Correct.
Yeah, fair enough.
Yeah, I'll, I'll second that, I think it's a good, good discussion.
Thank you, yeah. That'll give staff time to prepare.
Yeah, I don't know um right now uh whether it'll be uh the second meeting in September or the first meeting in October, I've gotta get with uh engineering to. To see how um they wanna package this, it's a temporary use again. And I think under the temporary use agreements we've had in the past, it was under the understanding that BRTech was going to make some capital improvements. Um, that we weren't gonna continue to have temporary agreements every two to three to four years. Um, but I'll have to get uh with engineering and and figure that out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Got that covered, meetings, uh why don't you uh take it, run with it, Director Nelson?
John, I have a few to, to report, so thanks, I'll, I'll just take it away, so uh on August fourteenth. Uh, there was a uh, the second of three uh State Water Resources Control Board uh expert panels. This is the second uh expert panel in the process of um implementing the uh Irrigated Lands Coalition. Uh program and there are a number of issues that uh related to Coachella. Uh in, in uh having the experts address in terms of um uh data. Uh availability and and data use uh in managing nitrogen uh applications. Um, it seems that through these programs, there's a real desire by the State Water Board to uh manage nitro. Uh agricultural nitrogen use and and it can become problematic in areas like ours that are. Geographically and environmentally different than um other areas um. Uh as well as uh what, what actually what um nitrogen's showing up in in water supplies. Uh, you know, our valley is uh has, uh does not have a lot of uh nitrogen contamination compared to. Uh, you know, areas of the central valley and and um so uh the, the Coachella Valley Irrigated Lands Coalition. Contractor MLJ made a presentation on behalf of uh uh Coachella, Palaveri and Imperial. Uh into those regards, so I, I listened in on that meeting and it was a, a, a good meeting and.
Was Dr. Montagar on that panel?
Uh-huh, yes.
Did he speak here at all on behalf of Coachella?
Uh, not on behalf, but uh in general, um he, he had, he was uh had some good comments about. About the lack of data and so forth and what needed to be uh done out in the desert regions.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, then uh let's see, the next one on August fifteenth was the USBR twenty four month study, which is uh. The August twenty four month study is the uh study that USBR uses to develop the annual operating plan. And so uh with the uh lake levels uh being at what they are in Lake Powell and Lake Mead under the um. Joint Operation Guidelines, uh the lower basin again will fall in tier one shortage, I'm sure you all heard that. Um, uh which, you know, for twenty twenty six, um California will not face any curtailments. Uh from the O seven guidelines or the two thousand and nineteen DCP, uh so um. Uh, but it does show that the system's, you know, thirty percent full, not, uh which is not very good. Uh, and then on August eighteenth, there was a section five contractors conference call that was, that's, those are. Primarily to update um uh us that do not go to the seven states meetings as or the. Uh lower basin meetings on what, how the negotiations are going um in regards to the twenty twenty six renegotiation guidelines. So um got the update on that and I think we're gonna have uh some discussion in our closed session on that. Uh, on August twenty, twentieth to twenty second, I attended the Urban Water Institute uh conference over in San Diego. Um, interesting group, but I think it's kinda revitalizing itself, it was a kind of a um. Complacent group, but I, but I think that they're, they're revitalizing, revitalizing themselves, I thought there were. Two programs of interest that I'll just discuss, um, one was uh a whole panel on solving problems. Conflicts and problems through collaboration. That, that was funny uh in that um uh you have to have collaborators and this was a study on the Delta Mendota. Service area and their groundwater sustainability agency and collaborating with all of the different GSAs, uh I think. Thirteen or fourteen that and getting different jurisdictions on the same page. Um, I, I was sitting next to JB Hamby and we were chuckling at the fact that uh you have to have collaborators in order to collaborate. Uh to solve problems, so interesting panel, um but they had had some success there. And then there was a panel with um, uh, let's see, with Jennifer Pierre, with the. Executive Director of the State Water Contractors, um uh Jerry Brown from the Sites Reservoir Project and Carla Nima. From the Executive Director of DWR, so it was a good, good panel and talking about, you know, the challenges and and um. And the status of how these projects are moving, um it, it was uh good, Jennifer um. Uh was, spent some time talking about the trailer bill, um Newsom's trailer bill to get moved through, uh. Uh, that would uh help implement the uh Delta Conveyance Project or the DCP. Uh, good, real good um panel. Um, let's see, then on August twentieth, we had the Colorado River Board uh over in San Diego. Uh along with uh the sixth agency committee. Um, we had an hour closed session item and it was really to bring up to speed uh of those who don't participate. In the section five contractor updates, um so the board members uh of the River Board uh. Were briefed on that by Jessica, the executive director and JB and as well as staff and. Um, actually, it was, it was a good discussion, um bringing up uh possible alternatives uh to. Um, existing uh failures of the negotiations, so we'll prob- we'll talk about that a little later. Um, actually, just keep going here, uh on August twenty fifth, at a Farm Water Coalition meeting, um Zoom meeting. Uh, we have a new social media director, um uh who seems uh very capable and um. Uh looking forward to um getting her on board and and then. Uh, we're also uh discussions about uh uh Mike Wade's uh departure uh in the first of next year. Uh and then um, let's see, um so planning for that and um. Receiving the tallies on the um, on the voting to increase the dues and the members uh. Near unanimously um approved the dues increase, so that, that was uh really good, there, there are. Water agencies across the state uh that um and it wasn't that much, but anyway. Um, the district supported that, um, so that gets me through number seven, John.
Right, yeah, go ahead, Director Agular, if you wanna do the next one.
Go ahead.
Um, well, I can keep going, uh, all right, I'll keep going then. Uh, August twenty seventh, we had a um, John, uh myself, Robert, Jim, uh Steve Abbott. Uh, I had a meeting to kinda get prepped for a uh Imperial Irrigation District, uh Met, a staff meeting. To talk about um how uh California may meet the four forty goal. Uh in reducing um diversions off the river in twenty twenty seven and beyond. Diversions off the river in twenty twenty seven and beyond. And so that, that was a, a good meeting. Um, and then September second, another section five contractors meeting, those are regular and then on. September fourth, the California Farm Water Coalition Succession um Subcommittee met. Uh, for initial reviews of uh applicants and uh I'll have to say it uh. Uh, there were not many, but those who did apply are very qualified and. Uh, I'm very hopeful and uh optimistic about uh the future of that organization with uh, with a new uh executive director.
Okay. You ran the table.
Yeah, there you go.
So you wanna go back up, uh, Director Aguilar?
Uh, sure.
Hit yours.
So, um, let's see here, so I had a meeting with um. Uh, with Patrick O'Dowd and with the C V Strategies and. Uh, person assigned who's going to be working with the authority, Salt and Sea Authority on a strategic planning meeting, which is gonna be. Taking place at the end of this month. And it was just a preface for that uh session. She had a series of. Ten or fifteen questions that we responded to and that'll be incorporated into uh work we'll be doing at the retreat at the end of the month. And then on the third, I had a uh, a request to meet with um, with Steve Abbott and with Jim. To go over some questions that I had on the Q S A relative to uh Salt and Sea impact and some obligations there. And uh that's it.
Okay, thank you. Director Stroud, you got the next one, September fourth.
Yeah, that was uh similar, that was a similar setup to. Uh, Director Aguilar's uh meeting with uh Patrick that he just reported on. In preparation for that strategic session, uh, strategic planning session that we um about to have. And so there were uh a number of questions as he stated that were, I think, aimed to. Hearing from us, kind of our personal take on our thoughts of the authority, kind of opportunities, challenges. Goals that we would want to focus on over the next five years. Uh, I in particular uh put a big emphasis on trying to ensure that. We complete the feasibility study that we have um with the Army Corps of Engineers, which would really. Set us in a position to qualify for some big, big money. At the federal level and um that's a, a project that. Uh, still has some years to, to conclude. I think it goes all the way to twenty thirty. Um, and there's a, a budget ramp up to, to. Come up with the money that's gonna allow us to, to finish that and so those dollars need to be. Uh, identified and, and so I think that's a, a, a big, big uh task, one of the priorities that at least I. I uh mentioned uh we needed to focus on over the, the next few years and that and including the, what is. Uh, to happen with the conservancy, uh, what roles uh, uh, each agency ne- needs to play and so. Those are also uh something that's gonna get established here over the next two, two, three years and. Um, gonna require, I, I imagine some of our input. Um, but yeah, that was uh, that was that meeting, um, preparation for that. And then I, I did have another meeting with Patrick. Um, I believe on the twenty ninth. Um, and uh, was it the twenty nine? No, it was on Monday, the Monday, the Monday of the holiday. So I spent my, my mo- morning with him, uh, also to, to talk about. Um, projects and uh concerns with the, the prop four dollars and, and things that we were trying to do with that. Um, so if we could add that to the list, I appreciate that and that's uh, that's it.
Thank you. Yeah, I had one more, I mean, in addition to the. August twenty seventh four four meeting that was already reported on by Director Nelson. Uh, we had our Desert Valleys Builders Association meeting yesterday, uh, September eighth. And notable there that Gretchen Gutierrez is re- is resigning her position because she. Wants to go live near her grandchildren in Tacoma. So uh she's actually found um a very similar role there. Um, she's fifteen years here and she's just done a really good job, so um. That was um kind of big news and then the other thing that I'll just mention and I'm gonna talk. A little more with staff on is concerned by the developer community about. Um, their perception that plan check through the district has been slower than normal. And frustration and they kinda ganged up on me yesterday.
I was just having that, a similar conversation with uh Director Nelson a few days ago, um, about. Those same concerns and I think I mentioned it to our general manager, but uh, sounds like you're hearing it.
I'm here, oh, I'm hearing it.
Yeah.
Isn't that, I'm, and I've heard it, so maybe, maybe we could uh. I, I feel like I need to go back to this group with some sort of. How, how we're going to address their concerns. With some specifics.
Understood.
Thank you. Sooner rather than later. For my own protection. Anyways, uh, are there any other meetings? Uh, is there a motion to approve per diem for the meetings reported on?
Uh, make a motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pass for a. General Manager report.
Yes, sir. Uh, Director Nelson and I, along with Robert and Steve Abbott, will be attending another four forty. Plan uh discussion at Metropolitan Headquarters uh pretty much all day tomorrow. Um, remembering back that we have signed a settlement agreement with the Agua Caliente. One of the things that's required is that the Technical Advisory Committee. Uh, be set up and that will occur on the first of October. Joanne will be attending. For C V W D um until we get the position that Zoe uh occupied filled.
Okay.
I have sent off to Mission Springs Water District the application. Um, a resolution of application for the I D eight transfer and we'll be hearing that publicly here. Uh, on our next meeting on the twenty third. We've noticed that in the newspaper. Um, there are a couple other steps that need to be taken uh by Mission Springs in order to make that move. Uh, I'll be talking to Brian before our meeting on the twenty third to try and get an update of, of their status as well, so, other than that, I've got nothing else, sir.
Thank you.
Jim, um.
Yes.
Uh, I imagined uh you were gonna call up departments, but there was some news yesterday. On the bill and I just wanted to hear very briefly what the plan is on that, I.
On the bill for what, sir?
For uh Senator Caballero.
I think, I think Karen was planning to give a comprehensive brief on all the bills awaiting the governor's signature at the next meeting. Um, there's also been another request by a member of the board and I'm sure she can say uh in a. Short summary without getting into all the other issues.
Just for, just for this one, cause I know there's some urgency on it, right?
Senate Bill seventy two or four six?
Four six.
Four six six.
Um, so our bill did pass the Assembly Floor last week, which is great news. Um, it is going to be put on the consent agenda for the Senate, Senate floor this Thursday. It was supposed to be heard yesterday, but within negotiations and their very long agenda, they just decided to put us on consent for the Senate, which is a good thing. So by Thursday, we'll know.
Yeah, so, so I was just trying to get a sense of the technical stuff, so, so when it goes on consent, it, 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 it's almost uh, for sure. That it, that it's gonna pass the Senate.
Correct.
And then, and then at that point, it, it goes to the governor for signature?
Correct.
And then when is it anticipated that that goes to the governor for signature?
The Senate has until Friday to pass any and all bills that they want to pass, including trailer bills, budget bills, anything else.
This Friday?
This Friday, the twelfth, and then the governor has until October twelfth himself to sign or veto any bills. So we have another month.
Okay, that's, that's really, I wanted to get that timeline, so thanks for that.
And yes, um, next meeting, I will be giving you a full report of all the bills that passed and what is headed to the governor's desk.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
And I have no report, Mr. President.
No report? Are there any uh departmental reports besides the one we sort of just had? Okay, so at this time, the board will recess in the closed session to consider the items on the agenda. We will. Uh, following closed session, reconvene and report out if there is any action.
They lose interest as soon as the board members leave. Thanks, Dean.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so the regular meeting is reconvene. We do not have any reportable action from closed session and. With no further business, we are adjourned.